The crowd today. Thank you for joining us at the City of Columbia meeting here November 19th, 2024. We're going to do the business of the city. We're glad you're here in person and online. My name is Will Brennan. I'm your guest host today. Mayor Rickman could not make it this evening. So with that, Ms. Hammond, could you call the roll?
Absolutely. Good afternoon, Mr. Bailey.
Present.
Mr. Brown. Ms. Herbert.
Here.
Dr. Bustles.
Here.
Mr. Brennan.
Present.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hammond. Reverend McDowell, would you give us some good words, please, sir?
Yes. Praise our heads. Creator God for all that you've done for us. For day today with all of the possibilities you've allowed us to share in. You brought us to this place. This hunkering down place. Where decisions are made. Conversation is ensued. And we able to move this city continuously in the right direction. Lord, we pray for every family in this city. For those who are who find themselves in incredulous situations. And situations where persons find themselves. In trying to find somewhere to live. Somewhere to abide. So we graciously ask today. That you might touch us in sensitive and creative ways. Touch every person in this room today. And let this be a meeting. Peace and tranquility. We ask it in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Will everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Just just me, my man, if you need to.
A pledge of allegiance.
To the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Pro Tem and Council. We will begin with the adoption of the agenda. There are a few amendments. Mr. Brennan, removing item number 10. Council is asked to approve the purchase of 14 T2 Cosmo pay stations is requested by the Parking Services Division. Award to Creative Parking Concepts in the amount of $154,388.12. This vendor is located in Nashville, Tennessee. We're going to remove the item from the consent agenda, sir, for consideration and put it after the parking public hearing. The additional item is the addition of the receipt of legal advice relating to matters covered by attorney-client privilege pursuant to SC Code Section 3470A2. I need this item in executive session as item 46, Modular Homes.
Thank you. Just to confirm, parking public hearing is item number?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four. So we will take up item number 10 after item 24. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Any discussion before we take a motion?
So move.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
No further discussion. Ms. Hammond?
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
Dr. Bustles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Thank you.
At this time, public input, individuals are allotted up to three minutes to address City Council about items on the agenda. The items requiring a public hearing cannot be addressed at this time. So of course, I know many people are here regarding our parking rate ordinance, and that will occur during the parking specific public hearing related to the parking rate ordinance. But with that, if we have any other others who signed up, Madam Clerk?
Not at this time.
Wonderful. Thank you. Approval of minutes. Item number one, council is asked to approve the October 15th, 2024 City Council meeting and November 7th, 2024 work session minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Ms. Hammond, please call the roll.
Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
Dr. Bustles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Pro Tem, I do want to do a quick moment of personal privilege, and this will only be a moment. I think you all will all join me on City Council for this person because I hope he's in the room. He probably is. He's usually running around helping you all and me with things. But I would ask Justin Stevens to come forward to be congratulated on achieving his 10 years of work with the city.
Hey, how about it? There you go.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
You.
You get a?
Happy early birthday.
Oh, is this his birthday? Oh, happy early birthday, Justin. Wonderful. Okay, presentations, item number two, the Dorothy White Brown 100th Birthday Proclamation, the Honorable William Brennan, Mayor, Pro Tem, but I have a feeling someone else is going to join in on this.
This, Ms. Wilson, when I saw this on the agenda, I thought we might have to rent out the Colonial Life Arena to have this meeting with the amount of Brown families in attendance. Ms. Dorothy White's Brown's proud day. I know the Brown family means so much to the city, and the city means so much to them, and this is a great honor, Councilman Brown, for you to bring forward for your wonderful mother. I'm going to pass it to you, sir.
Well, thanks, everybody. As the youngest of eight children, you grow up in a household that's a lot of fun, and it's crazy, and it's everything that you wanted to be and more. And what you don't realize at the time is that nobody else grows up like that. So my mom, well, my dad was the force behind the organization and structure of the family, and my mom was the force behind the love of the family. And my mom is going to turn 100 in 10 days, so hopefully I don't jinx her. That's a joke, everybody. All right, so here we go. Whereas Dorothy White Brown was born in New Rochelle, New York on November 29th, 1924, to immigrant parents from Russia and Ukraine. She met her future husband, Henry Arthur Brown Jr. of Cannon, South Carolina during World War II in New York City in 1943. They moved to Columbia as a war bride in 1945. And just as some additional commentary, my mom and dad knew each other for less than a day when they became engaged during World War II. When I heard about this much later on in life, I told my kids that that was the dumbest thing I'd ever heard my whole life. But I guess they were married for 77 years, so I guess it all worked out. Whereas Dorothy Brown hosted and advised foreign exchange students, Fort Jackson military recruits on holiday leave with nowhere to go, as well as her own eight children, their spouses, 18 grandchildren, and 13 great-grandchildren. Whereas Dorothy Brown supported countless charities in Columbia, as well as St. Joseph's Church and School, St. Peter's Church and School, Cardo Newman School, and Providence Hospital in Columbia, giving generously of her time, talent, and treasure. And in case you haven't figured it out, we grew up Catholic. Whereas Dorothy Brown is a living participant and witness to vast and immense changes, growth, and improvements in the City of Columbia over the last 80 years. Whereas Dorothy Brown proved her steadfastness, loyalty, and devotion in honoring and supporting her husband of 76 years. I was off my ear. Henry Arthur Brown Jr., who passed away five days shy of his 99th birthday in 2020. Whereas Dorothy Brown raised eight children in Columbia, South Carolina, in a loving and wonderful home environment in the Heathwood area. Her children are Virginia, William, Henry, David, Roger, Ann, Marty, and Councilman Peter Brown. Whereas Dorothy Brown personifies personal strength, love, diligence, patience, courage, humor, generosity, kindness, and a firm, strong hand when needed. Columbia is a better place today, as we recognize her for her achievements in our community. Now therefore, I, Daniel Rickman, Mayor of the City of Columbia, along with my fellow members of City Council, do hereby proclaim November 29th, 2024, as Dorothy White Brown's 100th birthday. Happy birthday, Mom.
I'm hoping she's watching the YouTube presentation of this. Okay, good. It's on delay, so she's clapping with us right now. I'm sure you will. Ms. Wilson?
Yes, sir. Well, that's quite the the honor for us to celebrate her with you, sir. Number three, Indigenous Business Day Proclamation, the Honorable William Brennan, Mayor, Pro Tem.
Is Ms. Vanessa Moto here? Moto? Who's going to? Is she with us today to accept? She's not? Okay. We look forward to learning more about her drive and passion for celebrating Native American business owners in our wonderful city, our county, and our Midlands. She's the CEO of Moda Enterprise and was the driving force in 2019 for us establishing November as our Native American Heritage Month, and we're going to continue that on this day in November, November 19th. The city proudly opens our arms to promoting Native American businesses in the spirited City of Columbia proclamation, which I'll read. Whereas a Native American Heritage Month is celebrated each year in November, and whereas the most recent data from the U.S. Census Bureau's annual business survey in 2023, there were over 50,000 business owners, businesses owned by American Indians and Alaskan natives. And whereas Native Americans are thriving small businesses in a variety of industries, including art, automotive repair, barbering, beauty, catering, construction, consulting, fashion, jewelry, yoga, and businesses catering to hospitality and tourism. And whereas the City of Columbia invites Native American business owners to be a part of the urban and economic growth that this city is experiencing. And whereas Moda Enterprises' Chief Executive Officer, Vanessa Moda, established the first Indigenous Business Day on November 16th, 2019, in the City of Columbia to celebrate contributions to the community, the local economy, and to celebrate individual accomplishments. And whereas, this is the last one, the City of Columbia celebrates contributions, the rich culture of the indigenous people, and will recognize events and festivities during Native American Heritage Month. Now, therefore, I, Daniel J. Rickman, Mayor of the City of Columbia, South Carolina, along with my fellow members of Columbia City Council, do hereby proclaim November 18th, 2024, as Indigenous Business Day. Thank you so much. We'll be sure to deliver this. Thank you.
Item number four, Santee Cooper Excellence in Law Enforcement Award, Mr. Williams Skip Holbrook, the Police Chief for the Columbia Police Department.
Good afternoon, Ms. Wilson, Mayor, Pro Tem, and Council. I've often heard you all say that we need to tell our story. Emphasizing the many things going on in our city and the great work of the City of Columbia employees. Today, I want to tell you about the incredible work being done every day by this group of people sitting over here. This past Friday, I had the honor and privilege of accepting on behalf of the Columbia Police Department the Santee Cooper Excellence in Law Enforcement Award that was presented by the South Carolina Law Enforcement Officers Association. This award recognizes the overall activities and achievements of an entire law enforcement agency and department throughout our state. The award specifically recognizes the team rather than the individual, with an emphasis on effort, innovative service to community, efficiency, and results. The folks seated to my right represent our team of officers, investigators, K-9 handler and partner, victim advocates, code enforcement, alcohol enforcement regulations, and a special prosecutor that make up our gun violence reduction strategy. They represent every bureau and the department, and it all starts with them. At the City of Columbia Police Department, reducing gun violence has been a top priority for many years. We have embraced a wide range of strategies aimed at gun violence mitigation. These strategies include enhanced enforcement efforts, the adoption of innovative technologies, and strategies focused on community relations, partnerships, and prevention. Just, just let me share a brief punch list of what we leverage every day with your all's support and funding to combat our gun violence. I mentioned our partnerships, our partners with the federal government, State Law Enforcement Division, the Sheriff's Department of Fifth Circuit, and our U.S. Attorney. It's one of the strongest partnerships I've ever experienced in my 34 years in law enforcement. It is genuine, and it is strong. Our Crime Gun Intelligence Center was established in 2019. Our average gun seizures as a result averages almost 900 a year. We've got a couple of officers. Antoine Hill is here. I keep recognizing him, but it's worthy of recognition. He's, he alone has seized over 35 guns so far this year. Antoine, and right beside him is his partner in crime, Esteban Santino. He's not far behind him. They're always in in competition, but it just is a representation of the emphasis that we put on taking guns off the street. Our violent offenders list is what is, makes us be intelligence-led, and that is done by our analysts. And we have our professional staff that represent our crime analysts that identify the most violent offenders in our community, and that's who we target. We have a special assistant U.S. Attorney, Mr. Matt Sanford. If you all don't know, that is a City of Columbia employee, and we have that employee embedded in the U.S. Attorney's Office. And with his assistance and the good work of our investigators, he has indicted or prosecuted 36 people so far this year for gun offenses in our city, and there's more on the way. Our ShotSpotter technology continues to give us real-time alerts and puts our officers right on our shooting locations in real time. And the K-9 officer and her partner, that's Chelsea Bowen, sitting right here, she responds to these shooting calls. The ShotSpotter alerts and the other shooting calls, this year alone, they have recovered over 270 pieces of ballistic evidence, and they are number one in the United States. Let me repeat that. Number one in the United States. And that's for deployments, and that's for finding evidence. And she is part of this national program and this national response team. Our Real-Time Crime Center, it monitors 600-plus cameras, LPRs, and our ShotSpotter, and this is our nerve center. It is our public safety technology network. Our interactive pub, public dashboards keep our citizens informed, and they can see where the shooting occurs and when the shooting occurs. Our partnership with Servant Connect and investment in 29203 focuses on fostering positive change through sustainable police and community partnerships. Through Servant Connect and their Burn Justice Grant, we've been able to reestablish our Police Athletic League this year. Ceasefire Columbia, that's headed now by Deanna Hurd. She previously was a victim advocate. To date, we have hosted nine offender call-ins and had invited over 250 of our most violent offenders to participate. These offenders are in a vulnerable category, whereas very likely, they either reoffend using the gun, or they be the victim of a violent crime. Our recidivism rate is almost half of the national average because of this program. And last, our Place-Based Gun Violence Plan orchestrated by Cannon Fulmer. You all hear Cannon's name a lot when we look at our data. He focused on 40% of our shootings that occur on about 3% of our, of our city property. This was a 90-day initiative that focused on three neighborhoods. We put officers in specific locations and identified, that were identified by our crime analysts, and we utilized code enforcement to address overgrowth and vacant buildings. In those neighborhoods in that 90 days, 47% decrease in firearm discharges, 35% decrease in ShotSpotter alerts, 24% decrease in violent crime, and a 40% decrease in property crime. And I'll finish with this narrative. Columbia is in the midst of a historic drop in violent crime. In 2024, we've seen a 46% decrease in fatal shootings, and not, or excuse me, in non-fatal shootings, and a 31% decrease in fatal shootings. All of our 2024 murders have been solved. Our gun violence mitigation efforts over the last 10 years have been, as Cannon has put it, Herculean. Through enhanced enforcement, the adoption of innovative technology, and the leveraging of our rich community partners, we've laid a strong foundation for continued violent crime reduction in our city. Ms. Wilson, I thank you for your continued support, and to this council for always supporting public safety and the Columbia Police Department. And I would ask you all to please join me in commanding these officers and professional staff for this outstanding achievement.
Mr. McDowell?
Chief. Chief. Thank you so much for your leadership, for these men and women who give up their time, talents, gifts, and service. Thank you for, for your leadership. Thank you for this. Thank you for all you do for our city as it relates to policing, our, our, our city. It is, it is incredible that crime is going down. And in the midst of it's going, of it going down, because of your leadership and because of these, my brothers and sisters, we are able to actualize and visualize some change in our, in our city. Thank you so much, sir.
That y'all, the Police Athletic League that's been restarted. Is that basketball? Or is it?
I tell you, we've had to reimagine that. You know, the, the traditional football, basketball, baseball leagues really have almost fallen to the side. So we've, we're, we're taking programming to the, to the neighborhoods. We just were able to, through, again, through our partnership with Servant Connect, buy a transportation van for Powell, and we've, we're purchasing equipment and initiating programming, and so we're going to go to where the, where the kids are. We just had a, a meeting with one of our areas that, and some of our housing areas that are experiencing some higher levels of gunfire, and just in talking to the, the property management stuff, there's over 400 kids that live in that, that particular apartment complex or community. And that just, you know, that, this reinforced to me that we're doing it the right way by going where they are.
Brown and I wanted to know if you need some extras for basketball, but since y'all don't have it, we'll be fine.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief, and our wonderful department. I'm sure, Mr. Mayor, Pro Tem, you're okay if they dismiss themselves to do their work.
Thank you so much for everything y'all do.
Thank you. Thanks, Sean. Or you're welcome to stay. I was just saying, if you, if you want to escape, probably now's the time. As they are departing, Council, the next items are, make up your consent agenda, items five through 20.
Now, note to self, we pulled 10. Is that correct, out of consent?
So it'd be five through nine and 11 through 20.
And there's a motion, and there's a second. Any discussion on the consent agenda item?
We'll make sure we understand. Item number 10. Number 10 is? Sounds good.
Okay. Any other discussion?
So move.
Ms. Hammond, could you call the roll, please?
Sir, Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
Dr. Bustles. Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to consideration of bids, contracts, and change orders, item 21. Council is asked to approve a new contribution in aid to construction agreement for Project WM437601, the Columbia Canal Breach Repairs, as requested by Columbia Water on October the 8th, 2024, award to Dominion Energy, South Carolina, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $7,500,000.
There's a motion. Is there a second? There's a second. Mr. Shealy, would you like to give a quick summary on these as we move forward on 21, 22, and 23, starting with 21?
Yes, yes, sir. Thank you. Good evening. Appreciate the opportunity to be before you. Item number 21 is a little bit different than what we normally see. It's what we call a kayak contribution in aid of construction agreement with Dominion Energy. This is directly pertaining to the restoration of the Columbia Canal, the reconstruction of the, the breach where the embankment failed in 2015, and this is the next step in that process. So they're going to be raising and relocating the, both the distribution and transmission lines to allow our contractor, when they're selected, to do work underneath those power lines. So it's around $7 million and change, which is a lot of money, but the most important thing in the memo is that FEMA has reviewed and approved the scope of work, so it's fully reimbursable. So we're, we're funding that effort and then fully reimburse.
Reimbursable, that's a great word.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Mr. Shealy?
Clint. So. Future expenditures after this as well? Are there future expenditures after this as well?
Most definitely. Yes, sir. So we're, we're accelerating rapidly, all three of those projects that'll be restoring our Columbia Canal. So this is a piece of roughly 60-some odd million dollars to repair the breach. It's included in that cost estimate or that scope of work. And again, we're looking to have that contract out for bid and before y'all this coming summer to actually do that. This work needs to precede that.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Let me ask you. I, I didn't hear you clearly. To prepare that breach was 60-plus million dollars.
To repair, the estimate right now is, is 60, around $60 million. The important part being that it's reimbursable through FEMA. So as long as they agree on the scope of work, the reimbursement occurs.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
No further questions. Ms. Hammond, will you call the roll?
Mr. Bailey. Mr. Brown. Ms. Herbert. Dr. Bustles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell. Thank you.
And Clint will stay up here to assist with any questions you may have. Item 22, council is asked to approve a new contract for Project WM473302, North Trenton Road, 16-inch water main upgrade, North Phase, as requested by Columbia Water on September 30th, 2024. $3,584.10, which includes contingency. The initial term of the contract will take effect upon issuance of the notice to proceed with an end date 570 days from commencement. The contractor is located in Columbia.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Could you just talk about, I know that the, there's very, like, small differences in 22 and 23. Can you just highlight that for the sake of the public as well?
Yes, ma'am. So slightly different. We'll call these sibling projects. They're really both associated with the notification from our friends at the Department of Transportation that Trenton Road was in their repaving program. And so we have a combination of old six-inch, eight-inch, and some two-inch in, in Trenton Road that we, if, if we. Road that we if if we did not replace and renew the infrastructure, we'd be cutting fresh pavement. So we accelerated this project. We split it into two phases that were almost identical in terms of linear footage. Some have creek crossings and some don't. Some have road bores and things of that nature. So they're slightly different, but we wanted to split it into two packages so that we could give more smaller local contractors the opportunity to to compete. And we've got two local contractors for both of these particular items. I do want to emphasize the appreciation that we have for DOT and the coordination that's happening now with their paving list. This is going to save us substantial dollars. And if we hadn't replaced the infrastructure, it's going to save our citizenry substantial frustration of us going in and cutting new pavement to make repairs on aging infrastructure. So Dr. Bussles, I'm not sure if that answers your question.
No, that does. Thank you.
And and I want to give a shout out to Dana Higgins and her our engineering team. They really did a phenomenal job of getting this work designed and out for bid so that we could meet DOT's construction timeline. So and if there are any hard questions, Dana can answer those.
Coordination with DOT especially. Thanks so much for for looking out for that list.
Quickly, can you tell me where this starts and stops on Trenton Road?
Yes, sir. Starts at Decker Boulevard, all the way to Forest.
Nice.
All the way to Forest Drive. So and and we're putting in a 16, and that really is going to improve our water system interconnectivity and resiliency.
Phone calls by about 42%.
I think it will help. I can't quote a percentage, but I believe it will help. Yes, sir. It really is a project that we've been wanting to do for a while and that's accelerated that. So thank you.
Any questions?
Okay. Is that motion for 22 and 23?
Are there any questions for 23? If not, then yes, that will that will.
22 is the north phase and 23 is the south phase for the same project. Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bussles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Thank you.
So item 24 is a public hearing in ordinance first reading. It's ordinance number 2024-039, amending the 1998 Code of Ordinances of the City of Columbia, South Carolina, Chapter 12, Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Article 2, Stopping Standing Parking Division 1, Generally, Section 12-51, Use of Loading Zones, Section 12-53, Mobilization and Empowerment of Vehicles, Division 2, Parking Meter Zones, Section 12-72, Location and Operation of Meters, Section 12-75, Deposit of Payment, Section 12-79.
How about instead of reading all that, we hear the summary from L before we hear if there is a motion in a second?
Yes, sir. Sounds good to me.
Thank you, L.
Members of City Council, Mayor Pro Tem, City Manager, thank you for this opportunity to once again review the proposed resubmitted plan for parking rate changes here in Columbia. If I could take a moment to highlight a couple of key factors about the parking rate study itself. WGI was engaged by the City of Columbia to perform a parking rate study for the purpose of amending the city's 2015 parking master plan. The intent was to assess the current parking rate and operations compared to the recommendations given in 2015 and provide recommendations for current rates, operations for the entire parking system. Cities included with the WGI analysis included Greenville, South Carolina, Charleston, Richmond, Parking provides services that are crucial for the city's hospitality and business districts, offering both daily and monthly parking options to support local local economic activities and special events. Building on the continued economic growth in Columbia, the Parking Services Rate Study is the next step in planning future innovation and growth of the parking system to meet parking demands, both for local residents and all those visiting the capital city. The current proposed resubmitted projections of revenue for the upcoming five years equates to $12.3 million. And once again, with no change to the current parking rates within the city, that would equate to just over $261,000. If I may take a moment and highlight some of the proposed changes. The first hour free in all of our City of Columbia parking deck facilities. There is no proposed changes to the hospitality rooftop-only parking rate of $35 monthly. Reduced owner occupant residential permits from $120 to $60 for 24-month period. Citywide on-street parking enforcement from 9:00 a.m. until 7:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday, with the exception of no enforcement on Saturdays in the Main Street District from 9:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. An increased fire lane fine from $200 to $500, and an amended owner occupant visitor permit for a 24-month period, reflecting $48 per vehicle, again, for the 24-month period. A quick overview once again of our parking system. We manage and operate 11 parking decks throughout Columbia, 14 surface slots, over 3,600 on-street meters, and over 1,400 passport-only on-street spaces. We have 47 blocks within the city that contain in-and-out permits. We accommodate six residential permitted areas, over 3,400 monthly parkers, and there is excess of 11,000 parking spaces within the Columbia system. Something that we're real excited once again to share upcoming with regards to innovation here in Columbia along Main Street and the Main Street District is our T2 Loop Cosmo pay stations. You'll see during the month of January, a removal of all of the current coin-operated meters along Main Street. That would be seven blocks. The Cosmos accept credit cards and passport, however, no cash, no coin. Smart cards are not currently available, compatible with the new Cosmos, but they will be in the near future. T2 Extend by Phone is very similar to our current passport parking Extend by Phone, and it also allows you the option to be notified when your parking session is about to expire, though you've paid on the new T2 Cosmos. And there are lots of options for merchants with regards to coupons and validations. And the T2 Cosmos offers a ton of real-time metrics and data for the parking services Within that project, as an FYI, for those that may not know, there are 238 spaces along seven blocks of Main Street. There are 104 parking meters, 19 30-minute spaces, and we have 15 loading zones. The reinvestment into the parking system itself, there's a focus to continuous improvement around the customer experience, safety, infrastructure, and the overall appearance of our parking facilities, such as CIP projects, facility upgrades, improvements, upgrading our deck facility cameras, migrating to a gateless parking solution within our parking decks, expanding our electric vehicle charging system. As I just mentioned, the implement implementation of the T2 Pay by Block Cosmos. Cloud-based license plate recognition of enforcement. You'll hear the term in the near future often, LPR, with regards to license plate recognition. Online citation appeal process, making it streamlined, simpler for the parker to appeal those citations within seven days of issuance. Implementation of an online permitted program and dynamic pricing through our Passport Parking mobile app, the T2 Pay by Block, parking meters with credit card capabilities. This slide provides a proposed monthly parking rates overview. All of our parking facilities are indicated on the left-hand side, including our surface slots. And again, the rates that you see before you are proposed. For example, unreserved rates, unreserved what the daily maximum would be, the first hour, second hour, and additional hours thereafter. Taking note once again, the first hour in all of our parking facilities upon approval Take a moment and talk about some of the permits and special fees. For example, loading zones, valet permits, bag meter fees, downtown resident permits, in-and-out monthly parking on street, resident permit owner occupied tenant to include visitor permits, and our hospitality roof rate once again currently at $35, and no change recommended. And that is throughout the city at all of our parking facilities. Rooftop rates are available at $35. Parking enforcement, proposed parking enforcement hours in the Main Street District as well as throughout the city once again is Monday through Saturday from 9:00 until 7:00, with the exception in the Main Street District of 2:00 to 7:00 on Saturdays. So once again, there would be no enforcement Saturday mornings between 9:00 and 2:00 in the Main Street District. However, enforcement would resume at 2:00 p.m. until 7:00. Next slide. Parking enforcement with regards to citation. This provides an overview snapshot of our current citation structure and the recommended to include the 30-day, 60-day, 90-day, and the total fines thereafter 90 days. For example, our handicap parking citations do not incur late fees. The fire lane, which is currently at $20 per citation, is recommended moving to $500. That particular citation would incur late fees. So at the point of 90 days after citation issuance, you would be at $250. As a reminder, upon public input, City Council approval, our second reading is scheduled for December 3rd at 4:00 p.m., and we look forward to also seeing everyone there and your feedback.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. I wanted to just reiterate a couple of the high points, and thank you, L and Henry and our entire parking team, who really has tried to make their way around this city, talking to the hospitality districts, the residents, the neighborhood associations, and and so on and so forth, since the original first reading was given of the ordinance. Since that time, as L has mentioned, I think it may have gotten dropped off, but one of the main points that we heard was certainly about the the on-street parking rate. So we have reduced that proposed rate from $2 to $1.50. I think that's definitely a point that we want to make along with the the additional items here that are proposed as changes. And what that does, if the listening public and those here will recall, because I'm always trying to bring us back to the why we're doing this, and the why is because we as staff and the community at large would expect that we provide a safe, clean, innovative parking experience for the citizens and business owners in Columbia. When we originally went down this path at the very initial reading, the projected five-year revenue to do that was $17 million. Because of the changes that we've made, we will still be able to do those things in as much of a timely manner as possible, but that projected budget has now decreased to $12 million. So I wanted to make that point, that that is a big difference, but also a meaningful one in that we heard what the public was saying and to the best of our abilities, tried to strike a balance with addressing those concerns and coming back, starting over, giving it more time. This is another first reading, so that original first reading doesn't count. We're starting from today to incorporate all of the changes that have been duly noticed and then would have another reading for the council on December the 3rd. This discussion has been going on for a long time. The first iteration of the parking rate study was noticed to the public and discussed publicly back in July. So we have given it from July to now to begin having more specific discussions and listening about any additional changes. So just wanted to give a little context as to what has brought us to today. Hopefully, we'll continue to have discussions today with the public hearing and up until December the 3rd. And we're we're happy to answer any additional questions.
Ms. Wilson, procedurally, moving forward, questions from council to L, then open it up for the public hearing?
Yes, sir.
If there's any friendly changes to come from discussion, we add those in whatever mix of amendments.
Yes, sir.
If somebody wants to make a motion, motion moving forward. Is that procedurally, is that all right, Ms. Hammond?
Yeah, in in line with your first reading.
Fantastic. All right. Any questions for for L from council? Mr. McDowell?
You had an opportunity to meet with community in the city.
Yes, sir.
Their concerns have been so listed. Have any of those concerns been, have we reached any agreeable facts on that?
There has been significant feedback, both from the community meetings, the merchant meetings, as well as phone calls and emails, as I'm sure all of you have received. Many of the concerns have been addressed in our new proposal. I do feel confident of that. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. McDowell. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, a few questions for you, L. Can you talk to me about the cloud-based license plate reader recognition technology reference in regard to the T2 Pay by Block slash Cosmo technology?
So the Cosmo units Pay by Block are slightly different than LPR, license plate recognition. So we will be implementing during the month of January, the T2 Cosmos. There'll be two on each block of the seven blocks of Main Street. The current parking meters will be removed. They will be set up with passport and the ability to pay by credit card. The 30-minute spaces, the loading zones, none of that changed, but it gives a more beautification, walkability. And if you don't want to go to the particular Cosmo units itself, you can continue to utilize passport parking.
Okay. And what about the cloud-based license plate recognition enforcement? What's that?
Great question. License plate recognition is very popular, innovative within the parking industry. And that software platform, I believe CPD currently uses a version of it, but it's reading the license plate. So maybe versus having an access card into gain access into our facilities, there would be cameras upon entrance, and if you're a registered monthly parker... be cameras upon entrance, and if you're a registered monthly parker, it would read that tag and the gate would then, you wouldn't have a card to scan upon entry. The same thing would apply to permitted parking districts, that those license plate readers on vehicles would be picking up those tags, and you might not necessarily need that permit hanging in your vehicle. It's going to know that you're permitted to park there.
I thought it may have been associated with the T2 Pay by Block technology, that there may be some cameras on there that read license plates, but I'm assuming that's not the case, correct?
Soon, soon. That's not what our current units offer. They do integrate the platforms, LPR and T2. The platforms can integrate the software, but we're not at that point yet. We're real excited to get these units along Main Street.
And another question I have, just, there's been conversations about the hospitality districts, and I know as of now, we have a carve-out for Main Street. I would like to see carve-out for the Vista the same way, whereas on Saturday, they also get the 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. with no enforcement. Was that talked about with the Vista, I guess stakeholders, about how they feel with the carve-outs?
It was not. I believe, to my understanding, sir, the focus was somewhat related to accommodating Soda City and the reoccurring event every Saturday, and being able to best serve those visiting Soda City on a weekly, ongoing basis, to my understanding.
And I also would add, councilman, that originally, just always trying to take everyone back to the overarching goals of consistency across the city, we were trying to get away from too many one-offs. I mean, we get that a lot, that people get confused if they're in this area of town versus another area of town and what the enforcement hours are. Of course, Five Points currently today, at their request, the Merchant Association has wanted enforcement to turn parking over, and we've been doing that for some time. So, now everyone else would come into that same consistent methodology of enforcement. It was, we tried to address the question that came up about the Main Street corridor, because there is such a regular, consistent crowd there during that timeframe on a Saturday, and then shopping in the surrounding areas. So, that was the thought process and why we landed there. Again, if council wants to, you know, throw other options on the table, that's certainly fine.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Councilwoman Herbert?
Thank you. So, a couple of questions. When we were talking about, I think it was page 12, and, oh, the one-hour free, the first one-hour free in all of our facilities, does that include surface parking, ground level, as well as parking decks, or one or the other?
It includes our actual facilities themselves. It does not include surface lots. For example, the 1127 Washington Lot on Washington and Main, right behind the 1401 Building and across the street from the Washington Facility, that's referred to as a surface lot. The first hour would not be free in our surface lots nor on-street. So, you're physically pulling your vehicle into a parking deck, a garage.
So, the one-hour free applies in the parking garage or deck?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And I do apologize to my peers and my colleagues, because I did get some input at one of the meetings this week about accessibility and having all of the regular meters removed on Main Street. What do we have prepared or in place to deal with accessibility? And he was basically talking about folks that may not have the coins, but what is our plan, or how are we going to approach that? Because I thought that was pretty valid.
Great question. Our intent is to get Main Street off the ground, give ourselves a moment to settle in. You'll still be able to park on the intersecting side streets. Those meters aren't going anywhere for quite some time. You may see the T2 Cosmo Luke's in other districts. We would love to bring them to Five Points into the Vista, but at this time, there's no plan to totally remove meters off the streets.
All right. So, the plan is totally remove off North Main Street, but you can park on any of the...
Intersecting.
Give me that word. You know, yeah, those streets, okay. And then the last thing, I see it was changed in the presentation, but I wanted to note that we do want to emphasize that all of the parking decks are, we have the hospitality rate on the top floor of all of the hospitality rates. Hospitality, hospitality rate, $35 a month on the top level of every parking deck.
Correct.
Did I say it right that time?
Ma'am.
And that wasn't in the ordinance that was initially put out, but we're going to address that today.
Yes, ma'am.
Right back to you. Mr. Brown?
Elle, a question again about the T2 Luke Cosmo pay station. I have similar concerns to, about the whole no coin, no cash. However, there's a lot of things in life that I don't like, and that's, we have to move forward, and so be it. Well, could these stations also take like a prepaid card from the city if we had something like that? So, if somebody said, "I want to buy a $10 card," then that eliminates the need for having a credit card. So, is that possible?
It is. So, we currently have prepaid smart cards. They are not compatible with these units, but in the very near future, we will have a card that is compatible with the Cosmos, yes.
That would help my concerns a lot, because I mean, again, I mean, I don't, this is, a lot of this is, you know, investment in our city, in our services, but it's also quality of life, you know, and that's everything we deal with. So, I want to make sure that we're not negatively impacting people's quality of life, and standing by a meter with no way to pay is affecting somebody's quality of life. So, if we could really make sure that that's something that we really look at, and make it very user-friendly to get a card, you know, whether that's going online and, you know, somebody's grandchild buys a card form or whatever, that I would like to see us really promote that as well. So, thank you.
Mr. Bailey, and then I'll come right back to you. Mr. Bailey?
Yeah, Elle, and I was going to go to that as well regarding the T2, but also, is there a larger, I guess, plan to get rid of coin being used for parking meters throughout the city?
That may be the intent. That's a long-term, range, phased-in approach, but in doing so, in creating a dynamic pricing structure, that we may at some point in the future have parking meters that accept credit cards, yes, going away from the coins, but we will also be implementing blocks that are completely free. So, if someone is willing to walk a couple of blocks, let's just use Main Street for example, maybe there's no charge at all.
And just offhand, do you know of any other cities that have gone away with the coin being used for parking meters completely?
There are. Off the top of my head, I couldn't reference them. For example, I have been in cities recently that have gone mobile app only, so you don't have the ability to pay with a credit card. It is only, for instance, Passport app-based. So, that does exist in a number of cities. I can get that information for you if you'd like.
I do have another question regarding the ordinance as written that legal may need to chime in on, where it says deposit of payment, where it references immediately deposit a coin of the United States credit card or a prepaid parking card. And if the meters only allow for a credit card, does that section pose any issues regarding the law being written one way and a member of the public not being able to use a form of currency that's referencing it for paying of their parking?
We can check on that.
I'm sorry it's being brought up at this time right now, but I just, I am worried about that being an issue with people who do not have credit cards, who may not have a debit card, but they have a card full of quarters that could be used, but they cannot use it to park. So, it would be great that could be looked into.
Yes, sir.
Did we not institute prepaid cards?
We do have prepaid cards currently that you can use in our parking meters, but those prepaid cards are not compatible with the new Cosmo Luke's. In turn, those smart cards with those new devices will not be compatible with our current parking meters.
What will it take for that conversion to take place?
I'm unsure that the two would ever be compatible. So, as we migrate to more Luke pay stations and meters with credit cards, that might be viable, but not currently with, our meters, our Dunkins and POMs are extremely outdated. The parts are getting more difficult to come by, so we're very excited to have a plan and migrate a phased-in approach over the next few years.
But we're going to make it a priority to get the prepaid cards, Reverend McDowell, so that the folks who don't have, you know, this accessibility would be, and we can make those available at our payments center and parking services, and just really try to widely advertise and disseminate those cards so that individuals who want to take cash and buy the card, or if they have a grandchild or whomever, that can help them facilitate getting it online. I think that's something, Elle, we really need to emphasize, that we're going to ensure that we get some type of prepaid card accessibility that works with the new devices as they come online.
Thank you, ma'am.
Great, thank you, Ms. Wilson. Dr. Bustles?
Yes. Well, thank you for presenting these changes. I continue to be very much in support of deterring bad behavior as it relates to overstaying where you're supposed to park, some of the fines, but continue to have concerns if we make exceptions, that that's going to continue to then dismantle any of the changes that are made and encourage council to adopt a all-or-nothing when it comes to enforcement approaches. When we make exceptions for, say, one event but not another, I think that that just sends a bad precedent, and so would recommend that we just have consistent enforcement citywide or don't enforce it at all.
Thank you, Dr. Bustles. If there's no further questions from council, Ms. Hammond will enter into public comment.
Yes, sir. So, at this time, we have several citizens signed up to speak. We would like to remind speakers that they have three minutes, so we ask that you comply with the sound of the tone. The first individual signed up to speak is Ms. Rosie Craig. Then we have Ms. Mary Sparrow.
This is going to be extemporaneous. I asked my friend Mary to put my name up, and I thought I'd be at the end, and I figured all the good points would already be made, and I wouldn't have to talk today. I stood here the first time in 1973 in August, eight months pregnant with my now 51-year-old son, and stood up for the Palmetto Building that our council was going to demolish. And so, at that point, I was looking forward into the future for the best of the city that we all love. And now, I'm looking at some precedents, and I'm looking at what we have established in the Vista. For the general public, we produce $2 million a year in H-tax from about 80 bars and restaurants. And you guys keep me straight, is it 25% or 30% of that money that goes into the general fund? That's the question.
Jeff, I said Jeff.
Is Jeff still here? Yeah.
She has a question about H-tax from the Vista.
Yeah. How much of it goes into the general fund annually?
That's that much.
Just the ballpark.
Is Jeff in there?
And follow-up with Ms. Craig on, at the appropriate time, perhaps after you're done speaking, Mr. Palin can get with you to answer your question.
Well, it makes a point that if our neighborhood ends up carrying the bulk of this increase, because we did not get the assessment as our friends on Main Street about how many spaces and what they generate, I think we need to back up and do a little more homework rather than risk that kind of several hundred thousand a year that goes into the general fund. I'm with Mr. Brown about wanting it to be a come-together and work it out together and not have bad guys or anybody butting heads. We live in a very social place, and we all tend to like getting along, so I think my three minutes are probably up, but it was a privilege speaking to you all today. And thank you very much, Tyler Bailey, for your excellent services and at-large to our neighborhood, and we're looking for equitable distribution of this burden, and our friends on Divine Street don't have any meters, and Tyler and I spoke earlier today, I was kind of put back from that. I love that place, I'm there a lot, but we do need to think about equity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll definitely get with Ms. Craig, but just to be clear, hospitality tax is an enterprise fund, it's not going into the general fund, so we want to be clear for the listening public about exactly what we're talking about, but we'll certainly get with Ms. Craig on her questions, but that's not exactly how that works.
Okay. Next, we have Ms. Mary Sparrow.
My name is Mary Sparrow. Some of you in here know me as Mary Sparrow, and others of you know me as the Mother Shucker from the Oyster Bar. How many people in this room are, raise your hand if you're concerned about the parking situation and you're here today because of it? Okay, we have a quorum. I am appealing to you today, not about money and not about the prices that we're here and not the paper that we have in our hands. I'm concerned because for 23 years of the years that Rosie's been talking, we've been on Park Street. We have about eight to 10 people that open that little restaurant every day. It takes eight to ten, kitchen help, the shuckers, the bartenders, and me. Eight to 10 people every day have to find somewhere to park, and 10 out of those kids are kids. These are students who are paying the meters, running up and down the hill, trying to find places to park. Now, multiply that by 50 or 60 other restaurants. We don't have a place to park now. The last thing I want to do has cost me $10 to park when it's costing me $10 of my salary to do that, and guess what, folks? I don't mind telling my son would die, I make $10 an hour. The boys and girls that are shucking oysters, they start at a minimal wage, and they make all their money shucking oysters and tips. Go to any restaurant, go to Motor Supply, go to the bakeries, go to the places in the Vista, anywhere in this, or anywhere in the city, our kids make their money shucking oysters and waiting on you. They cannot afford these heightened prices day in and day out. We need to provide for them. I'm not trying to be antagonistic, I'm inviting the city council to, let's talk about this for a little bit longer. Let's be personal, because that's what this is to me. Let's be practical, and let's understand, this room is full of, if I understand, some of our entertainers are here, and just ask them, where do they park when they're going to the Coker Center to practice? Where do our students work? Where do they live? Where do the people come? And let's not talk about just kids. Let's talk about the people who want to come to the Vista to eat. Do you know what I hear every night? "We couldn't find any place to park, Mary, so we had to go on back to Forest Acres." I hear it all the time. I hear it all the time. And I hear this. If we, if it gets much harder, we're not gonna be able to come down here because it's not about the money now, y'all. There's nowhere to park. I personally park at the State House on the street, on Assembly Street. I'm appealing to you all to feel our pain. This is a huge amount of money that the city stands to win. We need to do it the right way so we don't crucify what we already have raised and made and made it pleasurable. How many of you love to go to Main Street or the Vista? How many of you love to go to Five Points? Everybody in here has experienced it. We need to keep that flavor.
Thank you, Ms. Sparrow.
I see y'all outside.
For you. Come on back up to the mic, please, ma'am. Yes, no, to the mic. Okay. So that was, one of the things that we just noted was that the top floor of each parking deck is designed to the hospitality rate, which is $35 a month. My question for you is, where is the closest parking deck? Or, and if, and why do y'all don't? Because this is what I need to know. Why is it not used?
As I understand, the closest parking deck to me is where the Hilton is. It's a block down from the Oyster Bar. It is not cheap to park in there. And most, now, and, and I must admit, the times that we have been trying to use that are the same times that the Hilton is overbooked and their people, their patrons are staying in the same parking deck. There is some sort of a connection between the Hilton and the city, and I don't know what that is. But many, many times, I send my customers to that parking deck and they come back and say it's full. I don't think it's very large.
So I guess my question for staff would be, is that one of the ones that we're referring to? And do we have full control over that top level? Or does the hotel have control?
Elle needs to answer with clarity about the control of the top level, but it would, the $35 should be charged there.
Elle, please mention vacancy on those top floors throughout the day. Is, are these $35 permits 24 hours a day? I believe they are.
It is. With regards, so you have a couple of facilities that are close by. Um, the Oyster Bar, that would be the Park Street facility as well as the Lady facility, at which time we are having events for various venues at the Park Street facility. We have an obligation to the hotel, but we also keep in mind X amount of monthly parkers that we keep those spaces coned off, available for those monthly parkers. So it would be a rarity that someone would come to the facility and it would be completely full.
$35 does apply. Just say that with clarity for them.
Well, and I, I guess what happens too is the more that people actually get the monthly members, the monthly pass, so then the better the numbers and capacity can be determined. If that makes sense. But if no one is use, using the $35 a month, not making, using the monthly plan, you don't have, you have very low numbers to consider for what the capacity is.
That is correct. That they're not utilizing it. And we work closely with all of the hotels that we want to honor our commitment to those hotels. And we speak often with regards to their occupancy. So once again, in serving the community, we wouldn't want a hotel guest to come to a facility that's completely full. We take all that into account often.
Are those $35 passes durable? Car tag to car tag? So if I take my car tag, I can put it on another car?
No, the license plate is indicated on the permit.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, and, and so the closest ones to Oyster Bar?
Would be the Park Street facility, the Lady facility. The Lincoln facility would be a little bit more of a walk.
Okay. So they're closer ones, I think is what you're, you're helping us say.
Dimitri, is it Schuman? Thank you.
Hello, City Council members. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to address you. Uh, I have a fairly straightforward argument. I live in University Hill, literally on the same block as the Capstone, so in the shadow of the university. And what used to call 13, cost $13 for the privilege of parking, usually in front of my own house, is now being increased 20-fold to $264, even with the reduced rates. And this seemed to be against the spirit of the whole point of the parking districts. If you want to raise funds in the parking decks to support the parking decks and raise, you know, pay $10 to $20 million for this, that's the decision to make. But to do it on the backs of people only trying to park in front of our own houses seems wrong. And when I look at the Code of Ordinances, it appears to be against the spirit of it, which is Section 12-102, which says that the purpose is to protect the residents of such districts from unreasonable burdens and gaining access to their residences. Paying for someone else's parking in a parking deck is not part of my responsibility to park, do what all of you do, which is park at your own homes. Um, and then I looked further and it actually seems to be against the letter of law as well. If you look at Section 12-113, it says dispositions of fees and fines. And it says the funds derived from parking permits and the fines provided in this division are hereby levied and assessed to provide for the proper regulation, control, blah, 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 enforcement and regulations of the parking of vehicles in the permit parking district created by this division. The funds raised from our permits are not allowed to be used on parking decks. So I, again, I'm Section 12-113. So I believe this 20-fold increase is not warranted to pay for anything other than, you know, the three minutes that they take to make our little passes or the fees, which I presume pay for the parking administrators who walk on foot, to ticket cars who are very often unfortunately parked illegally on our blocks. So those are my comments, that I believe it is against both the spirit and the letter of the, um, the Code of Ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
So, Mr. Mayor, Pro Tem. So the, the figure you just said of $264, that's, that's, what is, that's not, there is no $264 permit?
May I answer that?
Yeah, yeah, I want you to.
Um, my wife and I each have a car and we also need to pay for guests to have the privilege. So for the three guest privileges. So you were saying it used to be $1 for each guest.
Let's go through the math then. So you've got, you've got a car, so you have one.
And my wife does too. We're the standard nuclear family.
Yeah, yeah, it's all good. I got, I got cars too.
And we, we also have to pay for the privilege to have guests visit us. And that is what I was.
So you're saying two, two cars plus what?
Three guest permits.
Three guests.
Yes. And it's not uncommon to invite three guests over. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I think, Mr. Brown, you were making the point there's no $264 permit by and of itself. So it would be the, the $60 for 24 months for each of the individual owners. And then the amount for the, the three resident, residents to have visitor spaces.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Suzie Dibble. I apologize, Ms. Sally McKay, and then Ms. Suzie Dibble.
Good afternoon, members of the council and city manager. I'm Sally McKay. I'm the secretary of the Board of the South Carolina Ballet. And I'm speaking here and, and here representing on behalf of William Starr, as I know you know William. He's out of town today. And many of our dancers who are here. William, Mary's in the back. Hi. He made it. Well, I've been upstaged by a wonderful human.
I was wondering if he had a twin.
I didn't know that he had made it. He's been on the I-95 a lot this afternoon trying to get back here for the meeting. Um, I'm here, of course, to, to talk about the parking. And, and I am here because of money and because we have 45 employees who are our wonderful Main Street and downtown neighbors who care deeply about this community and who need safe and affordable places to park. And we, we understand business is business. We also know our dancers and our staff are on a very tight budget, like so many people who work in this area. We are entertainers, as Mary said. We are artists. And we want to continue to be able to bring to Columbia this joyful art form that we provide. We are taken aback by the, the stark increase in the meter prices. I mean, I understand now they are from 75 cents to $1.50, not the $2 that I think was originally talked about. Park for our dancers, that, that's doubled the money. And the Saturday reprieve is nice in the mornings, but our dancers rehearse until 7:00 PM on Saturdays when they are in season. Our dancers are not 12-month employees, but when they are here, which is many eight to nine months out of the year, they're scrambling to park and they're scrambling to pay for parking. We come at this with a friendly attitude. We care deeply about the city and we are thrilled about the vibrancy that is downtown Columbia. And that is part of our Main Street district. We want that to continue. We don't want our friends and our neighbors to be deterred from coming downtown to enjoy what the downtown area and Main Street area has to offer. But we do know that our dancers struggle and are going to struggle more, as will the parents and others who are patrons of the Columbia. Maine and Taylor, where our company is headquartered. And it's gonna be hard for them to find parking and pay for parking for their children to come and study dance. So we appeal to you for more thought. As I know others have said, we would like to be part of that conversation. And as it regards the meter pricing, we wish it were more incremental. Not, not a, a jump, 100% and doubling the price, but, but maybe a bit more incremental than that so that our dancers and our employees will not suffer this cost as drastically as what we understand to be proposed. And on a lighter note, we hope we'll see you soon at Coker Center for Nutcracker. We're adding performances this year. Our dancers cannot wait to, to demonstrate their talents for you and so many people in Columbia.
So I have probably the same question that I had for Ms. Sparrow. Your employees that are there eight to nine months a year, do they not use the monthly pass? And if not, why?
Yeah, it's a good question. And I, I think some of our dancers have used the monthly pass. I think many of them have not. I think perhaps they have not understood that that would be a good deal for them. It's certainly something we are willing to talk about and consider. I mean, to be honest, as I'm sure y'all know this, like so many people, they're, they're arriving quickly to rehearsal. They're, they're hoping to park on the street. They like that for safety. They like to be on the street, not in a deck all the time or not in a garage all the time. And so they, they're looking for that meter that they could afford. But it is certainly something we can talk about.
Well, and I, I just think it's a good deal. It's very affordable, $35 a month.
Yeah.
And one of our newest decks in the city, PJ Cannon, which is less than a block away.
But, and what I'm wondering is, 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 do people really know where they are? And are they easily accessible? Because if we have that, that is what our solution is for. And Ms. Elle brought that from things that she saw across the country. She said, that's how they do it. They, this is, this is not anything we've made up, but things that she's seen in other cities that they have special areas with the hospitality rate and that's what we're implementing. I'm just trying to see what the disconnect is with using it. And, and I'm, that's just my honest question. Because if it's available, because there may be a reason.
Right.
I need to know.
Right. And we will, yes, no, thank you for that. We will gladly provide some input for that. We will be very happy to do that.
Oh, you can't give it to me? No, I'm not even funny, but.
Well, I've got plenty of people here who I know could speak to it. I know they're not officially signed up on your list. So, um, but we have a wonderful focus group of artists here who can, who can speak to it.
Okay. I just hope at some point, I just, that is, I will tell whoever is here, that is what I need to know tonight from somebody. If, if you haven't already signed up, please do so. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
And I will stop asking that question. I'm mere Pro Tem.
It's a valid question. I think we're, as staff, interested to understand the dynamic with that too so we can help make it more understandable for, for people. Because again, going back to the why and all the research with other cities, growing cities, absolutely, everybody wants to park right there in front of their location and a meter. But realistically, that is just, it's, it's not palatable for ever to be able to do that. And so we've gotta come up with options that make sense or safe.
Safe, yes.
The purpose and the why that I started with is the, the investment of the, the funding that will come from this goes directly back into the system to ensure, the first thing I said, safety, the experience of the decks and all of that. So one of the decks near, in the Main Street district is one of the newer decks. And so we want all of them to feel good and feel like that. And, and that's where the funding would go to. But in the same vein, a $35 a month opportunity is really, it's been, we've had that for a while. So we do need to know why we are not having folks utilize it.
I think many of our dancers have signed up to speak.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Brown has a question.
Yeah, I, hey Sally.
Hi, how are you?
Yeah, I'm great. I'm glad you're here. And this has really been very helpful for me. And I guess one, a couple of things that I, I think the city manager is doing a great job of, of trying to explain kind of where, where, how this has come about. I guess I'm pretty surprised that a lot of employees in the Main Street area and the Vista are using the meters.
Yeah.
And, and it makes me, now I realize when I go to the Vista and when I go to Main Street, I can't find a spot.
Yeah. Yeah.
Because all the employees are parking there. So, so I think, I think what this is, and as Rosie said, this is good because, you know, that $12 million that we're gonna raise over the next five years is for reinvestment into parking services. It's not, it's not to, it's not for me, that's for sure. And so what we're doing is we're trying to, to grow Columbia because Columbia's growing. And we gotta grow with Columbia growing. We've got to work together and, and, and try to solve these issues. So, so I'm, I feel great that we're talking about these issues and this has been very helpful for me. But I can assure you that if all of our employees in Main Street and the Vista are parking in parking spaces, that's not what we want.
Yeah, I mean, I can speak for me when.
I'm just being honest. And, and again, you know, I, I get it. And, and one of the reasons that we're doing this is to, to evolve our parking system.
Yeah, makes sense.
And, and part of the other problems that we have is we don't have enough people in some of these areas and we got too many parking lots. Um, and, and, you know, a parking garage is different than a parking lot.
Very much so.
And you can't have a walking city if you're always walking by parking lots. So, so these, these are the things that, that I, I mean, and, and this makes me feel maybe counterintuitive to some people. This actually makes me feel better about what we're doing because I have been concerned about a lot of these things. But in my mind, this is, this is validating a lot of the things that we're doing. But more importantly, it's validating that we're gonna solve these issues that are, that are in front of us. We're gonna do it together. We're gonna do it collaboratively. We're gonna do it as a team. And we're, and we're gonna work together to figure out how to best service the people who work. Yeah, right, the community. And, and this is all about the community. It's not about anything other than quality of life, community, economic development. All these things go together. And now I feel like I'm kind of pontificating because I'm not trying to. And now I feel like I'm kind of pontificating, because I'm not trying to, but I think this is, this is good, because this is just good old-fashioned discussions that we're all going to benefit from. So I appreciate you being here.
Thank you very much.
Very helpful for me.
And we care deeply about the citizens who come to the Main Street area who aren't going to want to park in meters that are charging them twice the amount.
And I also get the concerns about the garages, you know? And I think it's been very educational for a lot of us about the garages.
Yep.
You know, about who parks there, how do you park there, why people don't go in there, and how we can get people to use them and feel more comfortable using the garages.
And I spend a lot of time at the studio, and I promise you, I would never park in a garage. I will, I will circle the block, because I'm there at night a lot, and I will circle the block 100 times before I'll go park in a garage.
Yeah, and I want you to feel safe.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We'll see you at Nutcracker.
Appreciate it.
I actually have Susie and Charles double. I was here on October the 15th, and I'm so glad, and I appreciate y'all backing up and using this as the first reading, because this is so important for our residential neighborhoods as well as downtown meters, as we just heard. As far as residential, I appreciate y'all reconsidering the 120, dropping it down to 60, but that's still a substantial increase from $5 that we used to pay. The $48 for 24 months for guests, I appreciate that correction from 248, but then again, that's still a huge increase. The student, non-residential, I didn't catch that on the screen, and I didn't bring my phone in, so I couldn't pull up your minutes, but if somebody could change the screen and let me know, the student, non-residential, I think it's $5 a month. And I would like to know how y'all are going to enforce that, keep up with the students at $5 a month, because at University Hill, that's who we're having trouble with, is the non-residential students and the amount of cars that are coming in. So I believe owner/tenant, so visitor/owner permit for 24 months is $48 a year. So tenant, what am I talking about?
Two times residence is $120, three times ten is $140.
So what's non-residential?
Non-residential permit.
Uh huh. Yeah. Per month. So how are you going to keep up with that? How does this eliminate students coming in to park at University Hill to go to classes?
They have, they have a lot of contact with the owners of the properties as well, and we really need to, I've told them, put more onus on the owners of the properties as well.
Okay.
But that needs to certainly happen.
Okay.
But...
Okay.
Talk more about it.
And I think that might be an issue to go to zoning council as well, is because most of those houses have more than three unrelated people. So, and that's a zoning issue, which we will take that to zoning. But I think if zoning and parking could come together, we can eliminate this overpopulated homes in university neighborhood with students.
Now, Susie, you know code enforcement always has an eye towards that. So any addresses that the Neighborhood Association feels is out of compliance, we take that very seriously.
Yeah.
And we have a long list of neighborhood engagement working on that.
Right.
So please, share with us. I mean, we have to rely on community partners like yourselves.
Yeah, we will. We're on it. And then one more slide I wanted just to see, I couldn't figure out the math, the fire lane, thank you, Dr. Bezel, for increasing that to $500, but the penalty didn't add up, and y'all need to correct that. Can you go to that slide? It decreased.
After 250 on the right.
So you've got recommended 500, and then the total fine for 90 days is 250? How did you get the 250?
You're suggesting that we go back to 500 or stay at 250?
It should be 250, it's just a scrubber or error.
See, that's the same thing, we had a typo with the visitor, so let's go ahead and get that corrected too. And then I'm going to let Charles speak, because his math is so much better than mine. Voila.
Not it.
But thank you for flagging that, I appreciate it.
I came here primarily to talk about the Neighborhood Association parking, and well, the total residents there, we basically get two residential passes and three Vista passes, two times 60 for the residential, it's 120, and three times 48 for the Vista passes, $144. Total for those five passes, two residents and three visitors is $264. This presentation started today, the total current revenues that I saw up on the screen was $261,000. The total projected revenues that I saw on the screen was $12.3 million. Now, if those are user fees, but if that was a, if you were dealing with the millage and you decided today to increase the millage, not double, or triple, or quadruple, or quintuple, but you decide to raise the millage 48 times, I think you might find a little disturbance outside the City Hall today. That's, the, I'm a landlord, and I'm also a lawyer, and I do a lot of residential leases, commercial leases. You always put a small jump in every year. You don't wait a while and suddenly increase the rent 48 times. That's what's happening here. And that's why I heard Ms. McKay make reference to consider doing this incrementally, which I think would make a lot more sense, it'd make it a lot more palatable. Do it gradually. Yes, I think the rates have been too low. In fact, I don't think I've told anybody on this council, but I've told predecessor council members on a one-on-one basis, you know, the parking fees are too low. So stayed there. Now all of a sudden, somebody's deciding, we need to change this. So we're going to do it 48 times as much. That's just not good business, not good politics, it's not a good way to deal with the problem. Yes, I agree they need to go up, but I think incrementally would be smart. And Mr. Bailey raised a good question. On these cards, I have a little card, I paid $5 for the card, and I get it charged, I put about $50 on it each time. I stick it in the parking meter. Problem is, now I'm seeing things that are not parking meters where I can use this. So I see at item 10 on the agenda, which comes up next, is to buy 14 Cosmos, whatever they are, at $11,000 a piece. And my question is, are we going to have to have a special card? Or shouldn't we have, be able to use a credit card? Or a card issued by Parking Services? This costs $5, if I lose it, I got to get another one. If I lose it, I also lost some money on it. Well, that's money in the pocket for the city. This has been working. And what is, that $11,000 that we're talking about spending for each of these Cosmo units, how much additional money? I know it's nice to be able to spot license plates and other things. How much additional money is it going to create for the city of Columbia? That's a Peter Brown question. He's a businessman, and everybody here is dealing with the public money. Is that $11,000 going to produce anything? But that's the question when you take up item 10 on the agenda. But the incremental is a word that I think makes an awful lot of sense. And this radical jump in fees, no matter which one we look at, like $35 on rooftop for a month is great. I used $35 a month. I had access to the parking garage at 1901 Main Street. It was easier for me to park on the street, and I paid $35 a month, put a little sticker up there, and I went down to parking every month. And it worked well, except during the Greek festival. Three or four days there, I couldn't go. Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Mr. Bart Walworth, and followed by Mrs. Walworth.
L, let me ask you a question, please. The last time we've talked or even endeavored to talk about parking rates, how many years ago?
He wasn't even here.
How many years ago?
A number of years ago.
Can I say over 20?
That's fair.
Thank you.
Yeah. I think the point you made, Reverend McDowell, is since pay, pay parking was implemented in Columbia, there has not been any changes to it.
Has not.
Hence the discussion about incrementally over time, and that just didn't happen that way, so.
Whether we become a city or metropolitan city, and that's, I think that's the focus that some ought to look at with a real strategic eye. Thank you, ma'am.
I just have a quick point that I want to make about the $35 rooftop parking that's A lot of people don't feel safe walking to the garages, walking in through the garages, parking in the garages. And the hours that a lot of the employees work are off-hours. So it's a real safety concern, I know, for a lot of the people that this $35 would pertain to.
Ma'am, can I get your name, please?
I'm sorry?
Could I get your name, please?
Maria Walrath.
Did we want to speak to the security upgrade? That would come from this capital improvement program if something is to move forward?
Well, honestly, I wanted, y'all know me, I just wanted to get, when you say not safe, that's pretty broad. Is it, what, is it walking alone in this dark, or is it? And the only reason I say that is because we want to make sure that the things that we're implementing are addressing the right issues. But when you say it's not safe, give me a little bit more about what that means.
I just anecdotally know of people who work on, like, Lincoln Street in the Vista, the closest parking garage for them would be the, is it the Lady Street?
It'd be Lincoln.
At least. Lincoln Street Garage.
If they're on...
They work, some of them come in very early, they work at the bakery. So they're there very early in the morning. Those who work in the business are there late at night.
Is it a lighting issue? Is it a I'm by myself issue?
A safety issue in terms of people, there's a lot of homeless in the area, for instance.
Just, you gotta just tell us.
Yeah. And just in general, I think there's a safety issue.
Thank you.
Thank you. So...
No, thank you. That's, that's good.
One question, Ms. Walworth.
Thank you. Roll in the bag.
Similar, you know, I've always been thinking, it's like the scary movies, you always see dark alleys or parking garages in scary movies. Do you agree to that? Do you think it's, I mean, do you, just, do you, have you known anybody who's been a victim of a crime in a parking garage? Or have you ever had any personal experience or known anybody who's had one? I'm just wondering. I feel some type of way about parking garages too. So I may sympathize with how you're, what you're saying. So I just want a good idea of what your feelings are on it.
I personally have not heard of anybody who's had an adverse experience, but I know the fear is out there.
Thank you.
Now we'll bring up Bart. You're good? All right.
He's passing, so...
Mr. Brennan, Mayor Protem, yes, yes, sir. And I've tried to interject as we've gone along about that to the why and the upgrades and our CIP and what it calls for, which includes camera upgrades and, you know, making the decks feel better to people. I do believe, though, as we think about where we want to be and as we aspire to be as a city, and some of this is, are those things, but it's the culture, the vibe, the walkability, the, you know, a 24/7 city feel that we've been told that people are desiring. And while I hear, and I'm guilty of it too, this ability to want to park right by where I work and walk right in the door, and I don't feel, I wouldn't feel safe if I didn't do that. If you think about where we want to aspire to be as a city, and the type of city and the behaviors we're trying to encourage, not discourage, that, we have to evolve to that. And we also have to work together on it, I think, as Mr. Brown was saying earlier. But the data of comparable cities and those we are, you know, and how we are aspiring to be and the behavioral changes, the cultural changes, the vibe of this city in its core, and what also people are simultaneously asking for does not dictate that we do it the same. And some of the examples of those, hopefully in the room, who I know Councilwoman is asked to hear from, young people, people we want to stay here. I understand we would be saying we're making some changes so they can, you know, right now where they find themselves in life, be able to park and go into their workplaces. But are they going to stay in Columbia if the vibe and the spirit and the culture doesn't evolve to where we would want them to still live and have a wonderful quality of live, work, play here? So it's a, it's a really hard discussion, but there's a balance in that, and we have to all think about it, not just where we are right now today, but where we are trying to be. And it costs money. I mean, that's, it just costs a lot of money to get us to where we need to be. It goes directly to the things people are asking for us to provide that will help with this feeling of safety, security, and economic vibrancy.
Ms. Herbert has a comment?
Well, just, I do want folks to know that this is a difficult discussion, and I will tell everyone, when I came to work for the city in 2010, I could park anywhere I wanted to on Main Street. If I came to City Hall, I just pulled in. I remember the day that I couldn't park on Main Street. And I went in City Hall, and you know what I said? I can't get me a park on Main Street. Because that was different. It was new, and then that, and that was the point of us doing the revitalization and making the investments. It was an adjustment that I had to make, I'm probably still making. I will tell you all, I don't normally, I don't like parking garages. I'm just, I mean, I don't. I'm scared of technology, I really am not. But I challenged myself, and Ayesha's back there, I went to Charleston, I mean, I don't do, I don't do much of anything. I am the person that'll drive several times. I went to Charleston, we had an event, and it was at night. And I had to go. And I went, I found the parking space, and it just says text. And I want y'all to know, that's not me. Like, I'm not that girl. But I texted it and put my card in, went, and I don't like walking in Charleston where I don't know where I even am by myself as a female. But I walked, and I went in, and I came back, and I promise you all, at the end of the night, I really said, okay, well, I made it. Because I'm trying to expand even my horizons and going through this experience. So I just say that to say we feel, like, we don't take it for granted that this is a change. It has been a change for me. I'm one of the more stubborn folks to change sometimes, but, and I think that's what I just want folks to know, but we've been mulling over this for a while. So if it seems like we have an idea of what we want to do, it is because internally, we've been mulling over it for a while, not because we are disregarding the impact that we think it will have on people as they go through the change. I'm still going through the change. Thank you, Mayor Protem. I will not say anything else tonight.
Mr. Brown, you have a comment?
I feel now I'm saying the same thing. I mean, almost 20 years ago, my wife and I spent a lot of time in Charleston because our youngest daughter had a heart defect and had multiple surgeries at MUSC. When we first got there, I was, I did not like the parking garages. And what you find out is, if you don't like parking garages in Charleston, you don't park. Unless it's Sunday morning where nobody's, where no one's there. And we eventually, you know, just made ourselves kind of evolve, and we used to park at the parking garage behind St. Mary's Church, and where the, what was the hotel, Charleston Place Hotel. And you know what? We finally realized what a, what a great place that was. And what we figured out, the things that we had convinced ourselves was that it was more expensive, it was not safe, and we had our three other daughters with us, and a lot of times they would, they would, you know, one of, my wife would be there by herself, and it wasn't safe, it was too expensive, and we were never going to find a space. And what we convinced ourselves was, all those things were not true. And what we convinced ourselves was all those things were not true. But we really had no choice. And, and, and I think a lot, what my point's going to be, we want to do this while we have a choice, before we don't have a choice. And the way Columbia's going is, we're, we're growing, and we want to grow strategically and purposefully as a community. And if we don't do that, we're going to grow anyway. And, and then you're just going to kind of randomly grow like we have over the last 20 years. So we're getting a chance to make these decisions now as, as a, as an us.
Yeah.
As an us. And work through the issues that, that I am, I, I am glad we're hearing about. And, and I think we all realize that we have to invest in our parking garages, and we've got to convince people that there are spaces in there and that's safe, and that it's convenient. And that's on us. And that's what we're prepared to do. And we're prepared to do our job, which is to make you feel comfortable parking in these places. So, so again, I'm, I'm, I think we're all aligned on, on that we got to do something. This is, this is for, this is for the betterment of us as a community.
And as a city.
Yeah, and the city. And we're going to work through it. So, so thank you for.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Ms. Hammond, next speaker.
That would be Ms. Abby Anderson.
Good evening. Thanks, everybody, for having me speak here. I'm Abby Anderson. I'm the Executive Director of the Congaree Vista Guild. And on behalf of the Vista Businesses, I wanted to discuss Saturdays with you guys as one of our key things. We discussed consistency across the city and adding it to the Vista to Saturdays, but then giving a break to Main Street doesn't seem fair. A lot of the ribbon cuttings that we go to with Councilman Brennan or the mayor, we talk about how excited we are for any of the businesses in the Vista or other parts of the city, that they're making an investment with the city, they're paying taxes. And now it feels like they're being in, in trouble or not being cared for by adding that Saturday, but then giving so to City the break. And so there's all these businesses that come to our community that are food trucks, they have a business license, and that's it. And so we're allowing people to come and visit those businesses for no fee, but then we're, you know, penalizing the businesses who have invested in our city. So in order to create consistency across the city, I ask that you, the businesses in the Vista ask that you. Every week, and that's great, but does that mean that other events across the community are going to also get free parking in the future? It doesn't seem fair that we're catering to one event. Will Vista Lights in the future have free parking? Will St. Pat's and Five Points be allowed free parking? That's kind of an issue. I would also encourage you, Sarah Simmons, one of our business owners, is not here today. She's in Japan. I know she sent all of City Council and the City Manager a very long email. I would encourage you to read that and also discuss the opportunity to continue collecting information and speaking with each of our business districts so that we can spend more time. And maybe not implement these things on January 1st, but maybe implement them in the second quarter of next year to make sure that all of our due diligence is in place. Finally, those parking garages, we had some folks that discussed the $35 rate, and it is about safety. I park in a parking garage every day for work, and I walk my butt a block down the street, and I typically feel pretty safe because I'm there. But also at 9:00 AM when I arrive at work, there are people sleeping in the stairwell. And if I'm going to come across that at 11:00 PM when I get off my shift at Blue Marlin, I'm not going to walk past those people. And so it, it is a safety issue parking on the top of, of the garages. We had a, a college student speak when we had parking services there, and she gets to work at 6:00 AM to start making things for the bakery. And, you know, her parents would probably kill her if they knew she was walking down three flights of stairs and then a block at 6:00 AM just to get to her business and in case that she were into running into anything. So mostly I wanted to talk Saturdays, but I do hope that we can work on consistency and then also make sure, like Mr. Brown said, to do our due diligence and make sure that we cover all of our bases and get an opportunity to share as much information as possible.
Thank you, Abby.
Mr. Mr. James Fenner.
Hello, thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. I live in the Vista. I have friends who live outside of town, and they say, oh, we'd love to come to dinner with you, but there's no parking. I have used the $35 reserve parking for my own car, and that works great. I really like that. But it's not transferable. I would like that to be transferable, and I know it sounds like I'm renting friends, and I'm okay with that. If I paid the 35 a month and invited people to come, if I could give them the tag and they could use the tag, that would be good. My second point is, Mr. Bailey, you mentioned safety in parking garages. Yes, that's definitely an issue. I, myself, have been accosted in a parking garage. Did I feel unsafe? No. Did I feel uncomfortable? Yes. I believe a great city of Columbia opens and guests not just to feel safe, but to feel comfortable. That's all I've got to say.
Mr. Steve Henson.
Hello, I'm Steve Henson, and I'm a resident of the Vista and member of the Vista Neighborhood Association and the Vista Guild. And so I look at it like Jim does, as a resident, you know, sometimes I park out front in the condo and get busy, and I don't want too big a ticket when I come down and get in my car, and you have guests and I'll say, you know, you want people to live downtown. You don't want to be prohibitive to park on a weekend or do things like that. I know it needs to be adjusted. We're not Savannah, and we're not Charleston. I was recently in Greenville and recently in Charlotte, and we didn't pay anything. I mean, I don't know the details of how their system works. But I've talked to a lot of people who are lawyers and business people that downtown and residents who don't really know much about this. I know it's been in the paper, but people don't read the paper like they used to. So I think we just need to slow down a little bit and work through this and, and make it more equitable, sort of. Now, think about, I'm not a mathematician, but we're doubling the parking rate from 75 cents to $1.50, but like one of the other speakers said, the revenue's going up 48 times. I'm not, I don't know exactly how that works, but apparently there's some details that need to be worked out. But I guess my main thought is that we need to make some adjustments, but I think we ought to slow down and work through it for a few more months and be sure that folks are happy, because we went to a Vista Guild meeting recently, and it was like an uprising. I mean, you know, people were very unhappy, workers and business owners were very, very unhappy with the situation. So I just want us to slow down and, and work through it a little better. Thanks.
Thank you, Steve. Hammond?
Ms. Abby McDowell.
Good afternoon. Abby had to go pick up her kids, so asked me to speak on her behalf.
Please state your name.
Bobby McClure. I first have a question and then a couple comments. The question is, I know that the $35 a month has been mentioned for hospitality. I am a dancer, and there are many dancers here from the South Carolina Ballet. Does, is that available for us? Who, who is?
Your employee, aren't you?
Pardon?
Your employee, your employee of?
Yes, sir.
And that, that qualifies.
Okay. And is that generally the, the qualification?
Workforce development, yes.
Okay. That is.
Follow up with L on any other boxes that need to be checked, but yes.
Okay. Excellent. That is very helpful, because I do think that part of the reason we haven't been using that is we didn't realize that the hospitality parking was available to us as dancers.
It is.
Excellent. Thank you. One of the concerns that I have from that, though, is, as Sally mentioned, one of the board members a moment earlier, there's 45 of us at the company. We didn't know that that parking was available, and, I mean, that's cheaper than what I've been paying, so that's like, that's fantastic. We're really, really thankful for that. But the demand, you know, potentially could increase significantly.
I think there's two decks very close to you.
Yes.
Yeah, that can spread out.
Yes. But from what I've heard tonight so far, it doesn't sound like very many people are aware that that hospitality parking is available to them, a lot of the workers.
Well, that's where the, the marketing of that program starts today, right?
Yes, sir, it does. I do also know that, you know, safety's been brought up a lot, and, you know, for the ballet as well, I mean, you know, a large number of the dancers are females. And the parking garage that is closest to the ballet is the Taylor Street Parking Garage. And I'm sure you guys are aware that the Oliver Gospel Center is right across from us, which we're very thankful for all that they do. But that is a concern, you know, we get out late from rehearsals often, and, you know, the dancers are going back by themselves. And even I've seen, not even all that late at night, but, you know, 5:00, 6:00 in the afternoon, people just lounging in the Taylor Street Parking Garage, people doing different things on some of the higher floors. And so, you know, I mean, I'm, like, I'm fairly comfortable, but there've been things that I've seen that made me uncomfortable in the garage. So I think that that is, I mean, echoed concern, but.
Absolutely.
And then I, even you mentioned, sir, about the ability to possibly change tags. You know, my wife and I both have a car, and we both, you know, drive in, sometimes drive in separately, sometimes, you know, we need to take her car for the costumes or different, it'd be very convenient to be able to change, because there's a big difference between $35 a month and then having to pay for a tag for both cars at $70 a month. And so that would be a big quality of life.
Yeah, I think that's a very valid point. Looking at the hospitality industry, workforce, staffing times and everything.
Yes, sir.
I know not everybody works every night, certain shifts. So for us to really dig into that, we appreciate you all bringing that up.
Absolutely. Yep. I believe that is all of my thoughts and concerns.
Great. Thank you, sir. Ms. Hammond?
Real, real quick, Mayor Protem, I really appreciate this discussion and the examples, both anecdotal and kind of data-driven around people feeling uncomfortable or unsafe in parking garages. I just ask that you all come with the same energy as we continue to try and address our homeless population, because many of you have often been vocal opponents of us trying to do something like that. And so I think that there is a lot of different ways in which we need to address safety. And if the consistent theme is you're feeling uncomfortable because, you know, our unsheltered population, who unfortunately sometimes won't take the services that we have created available, are loitering in the dark or are accosting you in parking garages, we not only need to know that, but we need your public support for us to do something about it. So I'm just going to put that out there as you all continue to kind of think through some of the things we're talking about today.
Ms. Hammond?
We have Mr. Jim Daniel.
Mr. Jim Daniel.
Thank you.
Members of council, I'm Jim Daniel. I'm president of the Wheelahil Neighborhood Association. Just a little historical, Wheelahil got redesigned in the mid to late 60s, redeveloped in the 70s. We have now about 100 households, including the new ones in Phase 2. Of those, 20 are on streets that do not have permitted parking, 20 are in townhouses, leaving us about 60 residents that have permit parking. When the city was reconfigured, the streets were narrowed, parking permits were put on the city right away so people would not have to actually park on the street. So we end up, give or take, in this one or two per house, so we end up in the range of 110 to 130 parking pads that would be subject to the parking fees. I have looked at Charleston and Greenville. Charleston is $10, $15, Greenville is 20. They have different fees for the visitors' permits. I did, I asked the city to review parking tickets from when students came back this year in August until the end of October. We have had, Wheelahil had six tickets. Three on Henderson, three on Barnwell. We historically had found, once we have a month to put notices on everybody's cars that need parking permits, that problem goes away. So if this is supposed to be an income generator to help pay for folks supervising our parking, we don't need any help supervising our parking. We seem to be able to control it ourselves. The new rates. Board, we, our board has met, we all agree it's too low. We all agree it's to go up. I mean, I think right now, our goal is to be where Greenville is, which is $20. We would like to see the visitors' rate the same rate as the parking rate. And I think that sort of sums it up. I mean, we are, we are happy with what we have. It keeps the students out. I mean, we're right next to Campus Village. We've got six new houses in our neighborhood that have four or five bedrooms. We're working that out with zoning to try to deal with it. We have two litigation attorneys in our neighborhood. We're turning it over to them. If the city can't deal with it, then we're going to deal with it. But we like the permit parking. It serves its purpose well in our neighborhoods, but the rates, we think, are higher, but it's a little bit too big to jump right now. We'd like to see the incremental. And again, we think Charleston and Greenville are like us, and they're in the 10 to 20 range, 15 to 20 range. Thank you.
Ms. Hammond, there's no more speakers?
No more speakers, sir.
Are we moving to? Do we, do we want to do friendly amendments? How do we want to approach this before taking something forward? Because from the dialogue, the back and forth, we, we hear what you're saying. So I think there's obviously going to be some tweaks. Ms. Wilson, what's the best way to move this forward?
It, it would be best if we could get some of those friendly amendments on the record as a part of your first reading would be ideal from the staff standpoint. And I think necessary because any changes in TK can, Attorney Knox can help me. But we really have to make the changes on the record for the public to hear before we'd have to go through an entire.
Okay, perfect.
Re-noticing of anything.
Does that have to be done on the first reading? The friendly amendment piece?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we want to go ahead and plug it in now to move the First Amendment. Mr. Bailey, you want to start, sir?
Yes, Mayor Protem, before I get to any proposed amendment, I do have a procedural question. So could, Ms. Knox, what's the difference, then, if last time we were here, where we proposed some amendments, and now this is a first reading again, and us not do, if I propose amendment today or whoever else does, it's not going to be a first reading again next time?
We're having first reading again because there were additional changes made that weren't addressed at the previous. So whatever, unless it's just some type of typo or clarifying something, we need to put it on record tonight. Or we're going to have to have another first reading.
Understood. Thank you.
Clarification. Mr. Brown, I'm sorry, did you have a procedural question for TK?
Yes. So for clarification, if we make a change, are we going back to first reading or not?
If, if you make a change tonight in amendment and it goes through, then you're okay. We go forward with it. Once we leave out of here, if you make another change, then we're back to first reading.
That's all I wanted to hear. Thank you.
And lastly, there still is an opportunity for us to make changes even after we leave here today. Correct?
If there are any substantial changes, we go back to first reading.
Can you define substantial? Because that, there's going to be a neighborhood permit fee change.
For example, with what happened the last time, at first reading of this ordinance, the last time, you made several substantial changes. You did it while you were here, and we took a first reading. Since then, through engagement and outreach and public input, we heard some additional things, a big thing, moving from $2 an hour to $1.50 an hour. That's a substantial change that was not made on the record at the last first reading. So it would be substantial changes like that. If you leave here today and you make another substantial change of, like that, then we would have to revert back to another first reading again. I caution the council, I mean, again, council will make the decisions they make. The more we get to January without this in place, then, you know, obviously, we wouldn't be able to implement until later, because we have to have time to make, the staff has to have time to make changes to infrastructure, notice these changes and the rates and all the things that come with deploying new infrastructure by January timeframe.
January date, right?
We would have to see where we land. I mean, obviously, council has a meeting, two meetings in December after this.
Be beyond that, right?
If you all were to get a first and second reading in the month of December.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Back to Mr. Bailey.
Yes, and hopefully the public. Yes, and, um, hopefully the public does see that we're trying to work through this. This isn't, isn't a business decision for us over here, we're trying to do what's best for the community as a whole. And I guess one thing, Mr. Mayor Protem, before I get to my amendment, there were some discussions regarding transferring of a permit and things of that nature that seemed that some people may be inclined to explore further. If we do something like that, we will be back here for a first reading, correct?
Yes, if you want it parked, it's still gonna start in January, I mean, you can come back anytime later on and amend what you're doing now.
My understanding is if you change any fee, that is considered substantial.
That's because you have to have public notice.
Right, I think anything that maybe isn't.
Requires it to come back to first reading, if, if, if the fee goes down, then the reading continues.
Some would debate that, but that's the general practice.
So what would you say?
I, I would go with that, I would go with that. It, it, it would, what he said, if it reduces, if you have a change though, if you bring it up, maybe we might want to take a recess and go and discuss these and come out and put them on the record, you want to do that?
I would, well, that is one recommendation. Um, the other recommendation I was thinking about, if, um, if we can go big and then go smaller is a combination of the things that we've heard tonight so that we can then consider them and then decide which of those things we may want to bring back. Because I think the other part of it is, we gotta give staff something to work with, especially if there are calculations or numbers, you gotta have something to work with.
The problem is it's been posted and if staff works on it, then the public will see a version that's not discussed in public for the next and the last reading. So that's why it's important to discuss it tonight if you want to change it, so that the public can hear.
Do we need to enter into executive session to discuss and then come back out of this, um, executive session and then?
Follow with me.
No, she, if, I mean, if you can, yes, sir, if that's your preference, I mean, we worked through it and.
Well, now explain to me the difference between recess and executive session, because we, we are going to have dialogue about changing.
As long as it's legal discussion, we can do it in executive session. Legal advice.
A recess for an executive session.
It'd be the risk, you going into executive session for the receipt of legal advice relating to matters covered by attorney-client privilege.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I think it would be helpful to have legal advice concerning changes that do require a, another first reading, which I do not want to do, or changes that would not require another first reading, which I'm completely open to. So, so I would, I would advise that we go into executive session to simply discuss the legal ramifications of going backwards again versus going forwards with a, um, first reading vote.
All right, is that a motion?
Yes.
It's been seconded, any discussion?
Yes, just for sake of the record, just legal advice on the implications of making a change, not substantively regarding what any change could be, just a legal vice about making change and any substantive conversations go on back here.
Since it's my motion, I will say that it would be no discussion of, of particular changes, it would only be a discussion of the ramifications of making changes as related to another first reading.
Second. With that and discussion, do we need to go through to see what topics, uh, people are on hearts and minds to be changed?
And if, and I was absolutely gonna suggest that, because I do think it makes it a little difficult to have that discussion without knowing what we're talking about. Okay, so I, if I might, and then you all, if you, or you can throw them out there, but I've got a list.
Mr. Bailey and make our way down, if that works for you.
That I kept up, Mr. Mayor Protem, if you wanted me to read out the things.
Please do, thank you. Mr. Bailey, what's the?
What you like me to do?
Yeah, well, let's compare it, go for it.
Okay, um, the notes that I have that I felt like may be, um, applicable for further discussion, um, we have the thirty-five dollar a month rooftop only parking, which is for hospitality and workforce folks possibly being transferable. I noted that there is an interest in no enforcement on Saturdays in the Vista. I would note that my comments about consistency had to do with the fact that we've been, um, told quite clearly that in Five Points, they do want enforcement. So we structured that only around an event that happens very regularly every Saturday in the Main Street corridor. We have the. Okay. I have, and, and some of these are more policy-related or actions of the staff. The prepaid City of Columbia cards, widely advertising those as an option, hopefully out the gate to cash for cash and coin. And then again, the thirty-five dollar a month is more policy. That's not in the ordinance, so again, some of these things, and if you have other things, then you need to put them on the table, but those aren't necessarily things that I think you need to even worry about talking about in executive session.
Something, do you have something? Uh, I have, I have an input, Ms. Wilson?
Yes, sir.
Take a look at stair stepping, um, residential permits at a lower level.
Lower residential permits is another.
Guests and, um, residents.
For the, for the owner and the tenant.
Thank you, ma'am.
And I think the thirty-five dollars is not in the ordinance now, although we, it's a practice, so it may be that you wanted to actually put it in ordinance, is that right?
We want to put it in the ordinance, but we also want to look at, the, the question for this would be, um, transferability.
Right, okay.
Were there any other, uh, before we move to executive session, recess? Seeing or hearing none, um, Ms. Hammond, will you call the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert?
I.
Dr. Bustles?
Hi.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell? Thank you.
Thank you, we'll be right back.
We're back.
We're back. We'll call the meeting back to order. Thank you.
Hamon, as a point, no votes were taken. While we were in executive session, dialogue discussions to come forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor Protem, are there any additional comments, considerations? And whenever you all are ready, I can try to capture for the record amendments to ordinance number 2024-039.
Yes, Ms. Wilson, do you want to bring those forward and then we will put them into a motion?
Yes, sir. We will be amending, I was actually looking for the section or the roof, the, well, let me start with Section 1275, deposit of payment. We will be adding additional language to reflect other acceptable forms of payment. So that first sentence would read, "When any vehicle shall be parked in any space alongside or next to which a parking meter, parking control device, or space controlled by a remote payment method is located in accordance with the provisions of this division, the operator of such vehicle shall, upon entering the parking space, immediately deposit a coin of the United States credit card, prepaid parking card, or acceptable form of payment in such parking meter or other parking control device, and so on and so forth." That is the first amendment.
What section is that, Ms. Wilson?
That is Section 1275, deposit of payment. Moving on to Section 1211, permit fees. And these changes are in regards to the residential and visitor permit for the owner-occupant vehicle permit for a 24-month period. The fee will be changed to $30 per vehicle instead of the $60 per vehicle. For the, is owner-occupant visitor permit for a 24-month period, the fee will change to $24 per vehicle for a 24-month period instead of $48 per vehicle. So the owner-occupant vehicle permit becomes $30 per vehicle, 24 months, and the owner-occupant visitor permit becomes $24 per vehicle for 24 months. We will also be adding to the ordinance a practice that has been utilized, been being utilized regarding the hospitality roof rate for all decks in the city. We will just be adding this to the ordinance formally now for the $35 per month. Not for the ordinance because it's really a matter of practice or policy. The staff will look into the transferability of the $35 a month hospitality roof rate.
The $35 a month, what was that?
Yes, sir, the $35 a month hospitality or workforce roof rate for all decks will be added to this ordinance. We've already been doing it, it was just never captured in the ordinance.
Okay, so a motion coming forward will have three items in it, is that correct?
It will have, the first item, which was about the applicability of using any form of payment that we added.
What section was that?
That was Section 12.
1275.
That's deposit of payment?
1275, deposit of payment.
Ms. Mayor Protem.
Oh, and I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor Protem, I'm forgetting one regarding the enforcement. So that is actually in the ordinance, the areas of enforcement. And this would be the one where we will be adding the Vista for no enforcement on Saturdays from 9:00 to 2:00, along with the Main Street District, which is in Section... Be good if someone would help me out with this section. Okay, so we're going to leave out of the ordinance the hours of enforcement, but we're going to def, we're going to make that change per council's direction for no enforcement on Saturdays in the Vista District, 9:00 to 2:00.
Okay, any other questions, comments before Ms. Wilson brings forward the official motion? Anything? All right, do you want to bring that forward?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Any other discussion? Folks really appreciate everybody's input tonight. Ms. Hamon, can you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
No.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hamon, Ms. Wilson, and staff.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, I did want to note a couple of things that if we could get information, and I'm sorry y'all for not discussing this earlier, but I really want to look at the volume of those hospitality spaces that we have, so maybe we can provide some data on what's available. And then also, if we have any crime stats, I think that would be helpful to, just so we can put some, I just need, just some data to some of the anecdotal information that we've got.
I think the $35 workforce permit fee is a great thing for Greg Williams to promote to all of our businesses, so if we could load him up with that, that'd be great.
Yes, sir, again, council, it was read into the record earlier, council's asked to approve the purchase of 14 T2 Cosmo Pay stations.
There's a motion, is there a second? And there's a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Lots of discussion.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes. L. or somebody from Parking, I would like some information on why we are moving away from the coin being used for people to park near the courthouse specifically and City Hall, and these are government buildings where people have to show up for different things. And it seems to me that if the United States of America Treasury is still issuing coins, that people should still be able to use those when they have to do business with the government. So why would we be eliminating these devices that are closest to these buildings?
We will definitely get that information for you, sir. Keep in mind, though, the surface lot between City Hall and the courthouse will not have any immediate plans for removal of meters. Those will remain intact.
But the ones out in front of City Hall will, correct.
Correct.
So we'll lose, we'll lose those.
On the block of Main Street, but you'll have Blanding and the surface slot, as well as Assembly, will all remain coined parking at this time. I'll get that for you.
Thank you.
Anything else? It's, there's been a motion and properly seconded, Ms. Hamon?
Mr. Bailey?
No.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert?
Yes.
Dr. Bustles? Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Thank you.
Five, the public hearing and first reading for zoning planning matters. As Ms. Hampton comes forward, the first is a zoning map amendment for 3201 Two Notch Road and a portion of 3215 Two Notch Road.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Yes, this is a request for a recommend, this is a request to rezone the property from Community Activity Center Corridor District to General Commercial District. We'll just wait a moment while this, the map comes up. Thank you. So this would rezone the property from the CAC Community Activity Center to General Commercial, which is GC.
Is there anybody here for public comment?
No one has signed up to speak for this item. Oh, get in, sign up. Okay, go ahead.
Good afternoon, how you doing?
Good evening, how are you?
This is Teresa, and, City Council. Okay, I was at that zoning meeting, and they wanted to put a car dealership there, and they voted four to two, when, they told them, no, it could be, you could work on cars. So it was four to two for working on cars. So what, what he planning on doing? Because we got enough car dealerships there, just on the corner of Wendover and...
I thought Nutall was, I used to get my car serviced there.
Yeah, they say service, but it's...
Not a car dealership.
When you rezone a property, it's not for specific use, it's, it's for the whole range of uses that are permitted in the GC. That said, the, the reason that the owner is requesting rezoning is to be able to lease it to a car dealership.
It's to do what, not Krista, I'm sorry.
Lease it to a car dealership. But that said, it's, once it's rezoned, it can be used for any of the uses that are within that general commercial. So it's not as if you can say it's only for this car dealership, it's, it's allowed for any of the general commercial. So Ms. Wiley, I can't tell you for sure what they intend to use it for. They, that is what their intent was, certainly.
And the zoning people said that...
Come on up, come on up. Come on up, come on up.
They can work on cars, so y'all need to get that straight before you pass.
Just a maintenance shop other than...
Yeah, you could do a main...
A car dealership.
Instead of a car dealership.
Right.
And, and just like the Nut All man, he barely got in there. And I told him, I said, "You barely got in there." You know, because it was tire thing, that's fine. We want stuff in our neighborhood, but we got enough car dealerships within two miles, got 21, that's enough.
So, I need clarification, Nut All, they repair? Because I've been, they, and he went to church, I know him from church.
And repair vehicles in, in this current, in the existing district.
Okay, and he is changing it because he wants to be able to lease that piece of property to a car dealership?
Dealership, yes. Car, car maintenance has certain conditions on it that doesn't, that wouldn't allow for the storage of vehicles and that type of stuff. But car dealerships obviously would. So, the car maintenance would be permitted, but the dealership would require this rezoning.
Okay.
Is there anybody else to speak on, on this topic? Please come state your name. And your address.
Hey, good evening, I'm Steven Nut All. I own 3215 Two Notch, 3201 Two Notch, and Nut All Tire. Um, so what we've done is the corner lot down there is, is designed as a car dealership. It always has been a car dealership. Um, that's, that's just what it's designed for. Um, all the way back to Love Chevrolet, Saturn dealership, you know, was there. Um, so we have, uh, agreed in a lease to, with, with a gentleman that's got three other used car lots, uh, to lease the property. Um, we already, we did that back in August, um, everything was set and done. We got his security deposit, first month rent. He went to Business License Division to get his, um, business license. And we find out that it's, that, that my whole property has been rezoned. Um, so it's, you know, we can, we can function in auto repair, um, as what's been stated. Um, and the CAC and the GC have multiple industries that overlap within it. Um, and so all we're asking is, you know, to be able to sell cars out of it. You know, we work on cars right beside it, up the hill. Phillips right here beside it on, on this side, right across the street, um, has a car dealership as well as an automotive shop. They're not going anywhere, we're not going anywhere. And like I say, this property that I own is designed as a car dealership and the best use for it is a car dealership. And we have someone, you know, that's, that has signed a lease to lease it. And so, um, we're just hoping to get approval, um, you know, to be able to, to sell cars out of it and, you know, not just work on cars out of it.
Motion, sir. Nut All Tires is located at 3215 Two Notch Road, next to this property that, that you're trying to get rezoned, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Is that on the corner, is that on the corner?
3201 is on the corner. And then my business is in the building just up the hill and the old Dick Dyer Toyota dealership.
Uh, did they sign the lease knowing that it may not be approved for a car dealership?
Uh, we signed the lease not knowing that anything had changed.
I understand.
Yeah, so apparently the zoning changed in 2021, I guess. But we, we weren't notified, didn't know there was any change, you know?
Uh, and I, just, what I think I'm hearing is that, um, of course, the maintenance and, and repairing of vehicles is not a problem. I just don't know how Rev would feel about having the car dealership in that space.
Denied. And that's all I'm gonna say.
All right, any, uh, further comments?
No, I mean, other than, like I said, I mean, it's designed as a car dealership. It's got a shop in the back to be able to do auto repair, you know? And within the new zoning, we can, we can do auto repair. We just, for whatever reason, can't, you know, can't sell cars out of it.
All right, thank you for your time. Is, are we, are we accepting, uh, further public hearing on this?
Certainly be up to the council.
Uh, your name and your address, please, at the microphone.
Name is Robert Ashley, I live in Spring Valley. Uh, I've represented Steve's grandfather when he opened Nut All Tire on Taylor Street. I've represented his dad when he opened up Net All Tire on Millwood. Uh, his family owned the property on Millwood. He leased it from him when he took over running the business. And he had an opportunity to buy some property on Two Notch to move his tire store to. And it's a big area law, Dick Dyer had car dealership and repair shops all, basically all on the same property. So, we handled a closing for one transaction. And there had three different tax map numbers, but it was all one thing. And he's, so he's got, uh, an empty building there that can be made productive if you allowed to lease it to the fellow who wants to have a car dealership there. If this gets turned down, then he's gotta just tear up that lease and find some other use for it, but, um...
You got, you got Phillips on one corner, right?
What's that?
You got Phillips on one corner.
Phillips is nearby, yes.
And then you got, and then you're asking for, uh, a car lot in, on that next, across the street from Phillips? That's what you're asking?
I don't know if it's, I don't know exactly where Phillips is. I don't go by that section of town.
You know where Phillips is?
That's across the street.
And I would point out, from my history with that property, um, I represented the Love family when they bought what was, used to be Mary's Celebrity Club. Uh, and then, uh, I represented the Love family when they sold what they owned to Dick Dyer. So, and then I got involved again with Stephen when he bought that property from Dick Dyer. And it was an empty, they had gone out of business. And they had environmental pollution. So, he took that piece of property that was vacant and, uh, and now he's running a viable business out of it. Got a lot of people he employs. He's got an opportunity here to make what now is an empty building productive. It would be an improvement to the neighborhood, in my opinion.
Great, thank you, sir.
I'd like to do a first vote, please.
All right. Uh, Krista, can we, um, log this as a public hearing and defer the vote?
Can we?
Certainly.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Hammond? Vote on deferral.
For first reading.
For a deferral.
Pardon me?
Not for a deferral.
For a deferral, but we will make this, um, an official public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, oh, just a point of personal privilege. I was in your, um, is it Ramsey, Paul Ramsey class at Christian Life? Yeah, Dave Ramsey, yes. I need to come back for a remedial course.
Item 26 is an annexation future land use map amendment and, and a zoning map amendment for .73 acre. Um, I'll, it's in the Skyland Terrace subdivision. This is a request to annex the property, assign a land use classification of urban edge mixed residential and a zoning of residential mixed and portions are within the floodplain.
Yes, we have the applicant and we also have Ms. Melanie Ward. Mr. Jason Cutrell signed in first and then Ms. Melody Ward.
Hey, council, thanks for having me tonight. We, uh, I own, currently own the river property here, RS-2. Um, actually, I own about six properties there. We just bought these two pieces of property. It's part of a donut hole where everything around it is a city. It's super confusing right now. If I call to get, um, we have a homeless population down there. I have to call the police quite often to get homeless removed. Um, it's a, it's a big argument and nobody knows whether it's county or city. And I just assume be in the city, so I'd like to have it annexed. Also plan on buying that pond and that extra spare lot behind me in January. That's also, that'd be the only two remaining properties not in the city in that whole sector. And I'd like to have those annexed as well, that's my plan, as soon as I purchase them.
Thank you, sir. Any, uh, questions from council? Rev, is there a motion?
Ms. Melanie Ward also signed up?
Sorry, Ms. Ward.
She had to leave.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion?
Hold, hold, just a minute.
Mr. McDowell?
So moved.
There's a motion, is there a second? Motion and second, and any further discussion? Ms. Hammond?
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Brown? Ms. Herbert? Dr. Bustles? Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item 27, annexation future land use map amendment and zoning map amendment for 6709 David Street. It's a request to annex the property, assign a land use classification of urban edged residential small lot and a zoning of residential single-family median.
Thank you, Ms. Hampton, is there anybody from the public to speak to this item?
No one has signed up.
All right.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second, no further discussion? Ms. Hammond?
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert? Dr. Bustles? Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item 28, annexation future land use map amendment and zoning map amendment for 3516 and 28 Broad River Road. Request to annex the property, assign a land use classification of urban edged mixed residential and a zoning of Community Activity Center District.
Yes, sir.
We got his, we have his info. Is there anybody to speak to this, uh, topic today?
No, hold on, I'm sorry. Deferred. 28. Approved 26.
The staff's recommendation on this?
It is for approval.
And what, what are, do you know anything about the intended plans for it?
Yes, an owner of, uh, an existing, um, commercial development shopping area across the street wishes to construct another shopping center here.
Was there anybody from that area who showed up at the zoning hearing?
No, sir.
For or against it?
No, sir.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Hammond?
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown? Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles? Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item 29, annexation future land use map amendment and zoning map amendment for 5325 Fairfield Road. Request to annex the property, assign a land use classification of urban edged mixed residential and a zoning of mixed, residential mixed District 2.
Is there anybody from the public to speak, Ms. Hammond? No one has signed up.
So moved.
There's a motion, is there a second? And there's a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Hammond?
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown? Ms. Herbert? And Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Thank you.
That concludes your zoning public hearing, but I'll remain for number 30, Ms. Wilson, in case there's any questions, which is a zoning map amendment first reading for 513 South Saluda Avenue. This would be a request to rezone the property from Employment Campus in the Airport Safety Overlay to a mixed residential district also in the Airport Safety Overlay.
We had a previous public hearing, um, is there anybody to speak today on it?
No one has signed up.
Okay. Uh, any comments, questions? I do want to say, I, I know this property well, um, travel by it a lot. As this, um, portion of the Rosewood neighborhoods, um, grows, we're seeing a lot of multifamily, triplexes, duplexes. And I truly feel that your job in the zoning department, the planning department, is to put a overlay. But I don't think that works for every property. And that's how I feel about this property. The intent to put two duplexes on this property, I think overwhelms the road infrastructure and just the overall residential quality of life. If you, if you go visit it like I have, there's a lot of triplexes and duplexes. I just don't see this fitting the niche and the desire. And I've had neighbors call me about this. So, um, I would make a motion to deny.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Hammond?
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on to ordinances.
For first reading, item 31, ordinance number two, ordinance number 2024-076, granting an encroachment to Jakes of Columbia for the use of the right-of-way area of the 2100 block of Divine Street.
Approved.
There's a motion, is there a second? And a second, any discussion? Ms. Hammond?
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Item 32, ordinance number 2024-079, authorizing the city manager to execute a contract of sale between the City of Columbia and Grommet LLC for the sale of approximately .61 acres being known as 2725 Main Street.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? This was endorsed by the Economic Development Infrastructure Committee on September 24th. Uh, Ms. Hammond?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item 33, ordinance number 2024-084, amending the 1998 Code of Ordinances of the City of Columbia, South Carolina, Chapter 15, Parks and Recreation, Section 15-1.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion, second? Is there a second? Is there a second?
Yes.
There's a second, any discussion? Ms. Hammond?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item 30...
Four.
Four, I'm sorry. Ordinance number 2024-088, amending the 1998 Code of Ordinances of the City of Columbia, South Carolina, Chapter 8, Environmental Health and Sanitation, Article 7, Wheat and Debris.
Um, is there a motion?
Motion.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second, this was endorsed by the Health, Social and Environmental Affairs Committee on October 22nd. No further discussion, Ms. Hammond?
Wait, discussion, just letting folks know that this is making a change to accommodate pollinator gardens and planned or managed naturalistic landscapes. Um, will require folks that are having those gardens to register with code enforcement and get their garden certified.
Thank you, Dr. Bustles. Ms. Hammond?
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Item 35, ordinance number 2024-093, amending ordinance 2023-041, consenting to the inclusion of property in a multi-county industrial business, Part 2019 Bull Street Owner LLC.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Here's a second from Ms. Herbert. Uh, any discussion? Ms. Hammond?
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Thank you.
36, ordinance number 2024-094, authorizing the City of Columbia to execute and deliver an equipment lease purchase agreement in the amount of not exceeding $15 million between the city and the lessor thereof to defray the cost of acquiring certain equipment.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second, and I would, um, Mr. Palin, uh, earlier I had a question because, uh, it did not say who the contract was with. You want to give us two, two sentences on why it's written that way?
on why it's written that way? Two.
A long walk.
Yes, so this ordinance is authorizing us to issue this. We'll actually go out to a public bid. So all the banks will bid on it for the best pricing. And we'll do that in several months.
So we do not know who that is yet?
Not today, no.
Any other questions for Mr. Palin? Was there a motion, Ms. Hammond? Second, all right, Ms. Hammond?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert? Aye. Dr. Bustles? Aye. Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Event resolutions.
37 is resolution, oh, you all want me to read them all into the record and you take them as a group?
That sounds great.
Okay, resolution number R200024070, ratifying the authorization to consume beer and wine only within Boyd Plaza adjacent to the Columbia Museum of Art for arts and drawings on Friday, November 8th, 2024. Resolution number R200024083, ratifying the authorization to consume beer and wine only at the Greek Champ 2024 fundraiser at Green Street between Harden Street and Pavilion Street on Saturday, October 26, 2024. And resolution number R200024084, authorizing consumption of beer and wine only at Neon Joy and Five Points on 747 Saluda Avenue, the perimeter around the Fountain Plaza and 727 Harden Street parking lot on Tuesday, December 3rd, 2024.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion, is there a second? There's a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Hammond?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert? Aye. Dr. Bustles? Aye. Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving into a period of appointments, two entities, Columbia Prepares Advisory Committee and the Planning Commission.
Number 40, Columbia Prepares Advisory Committee. Is there a motion?
It's simply to reappoint, will to appoint Linda Ward to Columbia Prepares Advisory Committee.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Ms. Hammond?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert? Aye. Dr. Bustles? Aye. Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor Protam, I'd like to make a motion to defer the Planning Commission until we identify a candidate that meets our.
To defer, is there a second? And it's seconded. And no further discussion, Ms. Hammond?
Ms. I'm sorry. Do you know how many applicants we have so far for that?
For planning?
That's right.
We, we only had the person